Okay, it is six o'clock. We have called the meeting to order.
We've all unmuted.
Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order. I think this is the last time we'll have to read this.
Hopefully, the governor will sign it.
Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through parts thirty verse two thousand forty-five. Agenda items list of those recently anticipated by the sheriff. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee, Berkshire Edge, Berkshire Eagle. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So we need to do a roll call since we have numbers who are online. Sarah Tonetti?
Yes.
Allison Reed?
Yes.
Jason?
Yeah.
Do we see Andy? We do not. Bill Fields? Bill Woback? Present. Diane Singer?
Here.
Sarah Orland?
Here.
Rich Dehoney?
Yeah.
And Steve Bannon, present. We have in our pack at the minutes of February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and March sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion?
Who so moved to move their approval?
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Hang on.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing non-roll call. Sarah?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Turn it over to the superintendent. Okay, so we're welcoming back Mirabelle, and we'll start with Park. Tell us what's going on at the high school.
So much is going on at the high school. Um, it's actually, I've been a minute since myself or Ariel has last been here, so a couple of highlights from the past few weeks. First, if you weren't already aware, Spartan Winter Athletics went out with a bang this season. Our boys basketball team not only won the Webster Mass championship title for the first time in forty-six years, but also made it to the Massachusetts State Final. Um, we are incredibly proud of just the events dedication and hard work that our team put into this season. As well, it was really awesome to see the school community really showed up to support them. We had like all the faculty and staff that were there on the professional development day before the boys left for their final game. They wanted to send them off. A bunch of students I know were making the trek out to all the campuses to support them, so that was awesome. Additionally, our bowling team was recognized as co-state champions with St. John's High School, so go Spartans all around. Um, if athletic dominance wasn't already enough, we put on a outstanding production of Mean Girls, the Musical. The show ran for four days and was the culmination of roughly three months of daily rehearsals as well as super intense or intensive tech period. Um, the show was an absolute joy to watch. If you have the opportunity to go see it, it was incredible. I'm sure you can agree. And it also just showcased an exceptional level of talent at Monument. We had kids on stage crew, we had kids dancing, we had kids singing, we had kids working the lighting board, so that was awesome. Um, and then our theater will actually continue in, I believe, next weekend. We're hosting the middle school theater's production of Matilda, which promises to be another great show. Um, so if you can come see that, I promise it will be worth your while. So about a month ago, students in Monument's French language program hosted a group of exchange students from Institutions Saint-Joche de Montselle in France. Um, sorry, I don't speak French, I'm just sort of French. So these, it was a group of about ten to thirteen students. They attended Monument for a week, they lived with their Monument host student and explored the Berkshires for a week, and they're now hosting our students. So there's a group of Monument French students right now staying in Plantes Saint-Messens, which is a small village just about an hour away from Paris. They've been attending French school, living with their French families, um, exploring like all sorts of French culture while they're there, so that is awesome. Special shout out to our French teacher Rachel Siegel for organizing this entire opportunity. This is at least the second or third year she's done it, if not longer. Um, so that is wonderful. Last Monday, Monument and DuBois collaborated on the first ever middle school career expo. So representatives that were both students and faculty from our career vocational technology education program went down and engaged with our seventh and eighth graders about the different career pathways available at Monument. The student reps and staff did an awesome job, and the report back was that we have students who are now really, really excited to come to Monument and engage with these opportunities, which is something that's really important to us. We really want to get middle schoolers excited to come and be a part of Monument's community and of our opportunities. Um, on a similar note, we hosted our freshman open house last night for the upcoming freshman class of two thousand twenty-nine, and we are really just excited in general to welcome that new class in as we get ready to send the seniors off. So yeah. In terms of challenges on a heavier note, the impact interventions taken by immigration enforcement in Berkshire County has had some negative impacts on our school community. Their students were facing challenges firsthand, but the impact overall has been widespread throughout the community. We have a very supportive and great community at Monument and are doing everything that we can to support all members of the community during this challenging and year time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mirabelle.
Thank you very much. Um, why don't we go, we'll work our way down, so Jake?
All right. Starting with you, really like a little child. I really appreciate this. I'm sorry I'm using my phone. I got here and realized my laptop is dead, so if I am like this, you'll forgive me. Um, thank you. It's nice to be here as always. We want to thank, this is going back to the beginning of the month, but Monument welcomed both Moneybrook and DuBois up to Monument for Music in Our Schools Month concert. And it was really awesome. We took our entire school, uh, staff and students, and the performance was wonderful. Our seventh and eighth grade chorus got to perform with the high school chorus, which was really exciting. The music was beautiful, but as was said really nicely by you a couple of minutes ago, any opportunity we get to get our middle school kids up with high school students and into the high school, we want to take advantage of. Um, we want to build excitement about progressing through DuBois and heading up the hill to Monument. So we're grateful to everybody that was involved in that concert. We're very pleased that too, and we've had four open paraprofessional positions for the entire school year. Uh, at the beginning of this month, we filled two of the four, which was excellent and much needed. And so really, thanks to lots of people for that. Um, Nurse Becky over at Moneybrook recruited one person who we hired, and one of our teachers recruited another person. And of course, Dorian Twess, kind of an unsung hero for decades in this district, does all of the work to get folks on board and in the door, and we're really grateful to her and for her. Um, Shakespeare Company has begun their annual spring residency with our seventh graders. It's really exciting to see the kids doing the work with the folks from Shake &amp; Co. Um, they are working on Macbeth, which is pretty exciting. And their performance will be on April tenth at seven P M. at the Tina Packer Playhouse, and we're all really looking forward to that. Uh, just want you all to know that we are working with an organization with some local ties called Changemakers for Good as a means of carrying on the work we started with the Federal Department of Justice School Spirit Program. So just to make our school a more welcoming place, uh, where both our actions and our language um, say to everybody that they are welcome in our school and that our school is indeed their academic home. Um, thank you again for mentioning the expo. The expo was amazing. Uh, the number, I think there must have been like forty high school students that came down with their teachers to talk with our seventh and eighth graders about the Monument experience and about career pathways. And it was so exciting to see that in action and to see the excitement and the kind of academic momentum that that built into our kids. Uh, we had ninety P meeting today with a seventh grader, and when we got to the portion of the meeting where the student says what their goals for the future are, you know, thinking five years ahead, without a second of hesitation, seventh grade students said, I want to go into the Early Childhood Education and Care Program at Monument, and I can't wait to get there. And everybody at the table was like, wow, that was awesome. Uh, and that's a direct result from the expo happening, and so thank you to the to our wonderful neighbor students and our colleagues from Monument for making that happen. Uh, we had twenty, over twenty students participate, and we did a little film festival uh, here over the past couple of months in the library during lunch and recess to honor Black History Month and Women's History Month. Um, some pretty serious films that our middle school students took part in and gave up their lunch while they ate lunch in the library. They gave up lunch and recess to do some learning through film, and thank you to Jennifer Garen, our librarian, for putting that together. And of course, again, thank you for mentioning this, the annual WBB DuBois Musical, which is Matilda, which people will be gearing up for. I, kids started talking about it in September, and the, the it's a reaching fever pitch now. Um, the show actually takes place, and again, we're really grateful that that the show is going to be at Monument this year, which I believe is a change in tradition, and Steve was really helpful in making that tradition, and the folks at Monument were super helpful and super flexible. Again, we saw it as an opportunity to get our kids into that building and in building anticipation for being a Monument Mountain student. And I think the, um, the, whoever the fire marshal is for Great Barrington will be reading a little easier that we will not be packed into our
There's been some crowded nights.
You know how, you know how it gets, and I think this will just be a more comfortable experience. The kids are super excited. This is Tech Week, so this is the first week that they actually went over. And so thank you again to our neighbors up on the hill for making that happen. Um, the shows take place on Friday, April fourth at seven, Saturday, April fifth at seven, and Sunday, April sixth at two P M. And we wish everybody well and hope to see you there. Some challenges, absences and tardies continue to be problematic, including people taking springtime vacations uh, before and after spring break, um, and winter break, so that continues to be a challenge. Um, probably the most obvious thing that will be said in this room tonight, the loss of positions were really, um, you know, people are, I won't even say, people are just worried about how we're going to deal with it. Deal with it, we will, and it will be fine, and kids will not lose, but, um, but it's caused a little bit of stress and we're working through that understandably. We've instituted a snack program at DuBois, and I hesitate to put this under challenges because, you know, our lunches start late, and we're looking, you know, if you're an eighth grader, you're not getting lunch until like twelve thirty, and you've probably got to school around seven thirty. Um, so we instituted a snack program with the help of the PTO. I gotta tell you, um, we could have like a snack factory beside the school, and we would still be struggling to keep up with demand. And, and so we're trying to figure out some practices and policies to make that a little less disruptive and a little more effective and to keep it from bankrupting the PTO, but we're grateful for the folks that are making that happen. And then finally, our challenge, and this is one that comes up every time, this, this, uh, every spring, I'm sure. The MCAS schedule and MCAS kind of dictating how our, um, April and May look continues to be a real frustration to educators who have, uh, and to students and the families. Um, we're really making a push to families that the MCAS uh, is not an event. It's sort of an organic process that allows us to see how their students are doing relative to the state's curriculum. But as importantly or more importantly, see how we're doing, see how our curriculum's doing, see how our instruction's doing. So we're really starting this Friday, doing a push to ask people to consider letting their kids take MCAS. I know that DuBois has a reputation for having a lot of opt-outs. We really think it's valuable information, even as we are frustrated by the amount of time that it takes up and the number of resources that it takes up. So thank you for all of that time. That was a long list.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, so we haven't met in quite a while, um, so I also like, Jake, I'm going to go back a little ways. Um, we had Community Reader Day, which many of you came to our school and participated in, which was really awesome. Um, so we had school committee members, we had grandparents, we had local community members. It was great. Um, that was all part of Read Across America Week, the culmination of which was a performance from, uh, Barrington Theater Group that did a Magic Treehouse book, um, called Pirates Past Noon. It was by far one of the best plays they've put on for us. And Mary Pope Osborne and her husband were there. And she, of course, is the author of the books, and he is the author of the plays that he writes for that get put on, um, throughout Berkshire County, and it was phenomenal, really absolutely wonderful. We also had a multi-language language literacy night. Um, we had about fi- uh, twelve families that came who are multi-language learners, and, um, there was a meal served and books were given out and materials, and there were conversations around how important early literacy is and reading with your students. And, um, it doesn't matter what language you read to your kids in, as long as you have a practice of um, instilling the importance of reading with your families. So that was really amazing. Uh, we also had a math consultant come in for our full professional development day. Um, and some of our teachers said it was some of the best PD they have had. It was around number sense. Um, and it was, uh, not only was it about number sense, which pre-K through fourth grade is a skill that we're still teaching in all of those grades. This, uh, woman has also had a ton of experience implementing our specific curriculum. So she worked in and dovetailed the importance of, uh, number sense with the actual curriculum that they're using on a daily basis, which is, um, really what they needed. It was awesome. Uh, and on that same day, our paraprofessionals had a full day training around, um, informed practices, working with students who, um, had experienced trauma. Then that was given by Betsy DiAgostino, our assistant principal. And that also, the paraprofessionals just absolutely raved about it. They were so thrilled to, um, to have that type of a training and be considered in that way, um, and to be heard. Uh, it was really, it was wonderful. So that was great. Um, we also had thirteen students seen by a dental hygienist at our school, which, um, is part of community outreach, and she comes to the school and she sat up in the science room and saw students that don't get seen by, um, a dentist, and from those students, four of them got into an actual dentist to have the treatment that needed to be done, that otherwise they wouldn't have been prioritized to get into a dentist. So, um, that was some really nice, uh, nice work. And all around, um, we're seeing a lot of amazing student growth in our, um, in our benchmark data and our progress monitoring data, particularly around reading, which is really exciting. Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah, thanks.
Great. Um, so I, I don't think we have any grant approvals or donations, so I think we jump right to the uh, audit reports, and I'd like to invite you guys to come up and introduce yourselves. Uh, feel free to
Yeah.
sit right next to me, but I'm fible.
I'll be, uh, with a short mission. Uh, my name is David Irwin. I'm a partner with Addison Company in your new audits. And this is Joe Collin, my colleague. I've been with Farnsworth for twelve years and actually been responsible for running the field work and putting together the financial statements. Um, I mean, everybody should have a copy of the audit.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, it's a very short document. I think all of those are about fifty pages.
It makes a corporate audit look puny.
Yes. Um, so I'll try and just do a high-level summary, fifteen minutes.
Yes, it's very
Questions and answers.
Okay.
Um, so if you got the larger document, the financial statements, okay? Um, and if you go to page three, it says independent auditors issued. This is the opinion on the financial statements. It goes on for a couple of pages. It's got a lot of words to it, but, uh, the basic point out of it in the first two paragraphs is that we issued a clean opinion. Uh, they call it unmodified, meaning we didn't have to make any modifications to the report. The financial statements are in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States, and there's no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and they accurately represent your financial position as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, so go clean opinion first. Uh, so that goes off a quick review. Then there's a series of pages that starts at six dash one, and it goes all the way to six dash six. And we're going to bypass that. Um, it's the management discussion analysis. It precedes the financial statements. It talks about the type of reports that are in there, the types of statements, and we're going to go with that stuff anyways. So we can go right to the balance sheet on page seven. Uh, it's also called the statement of net position. Okay? Now, uh, to kind of lay a little bit of, uh, foundation here, we have two bases of accounting that is inside these financial statements. We have full accrual basis that follows generally accepted accounting principles and, uh, which is page seven and eight. Those pages are required to be inside your financial statements in order for us to issue a clean opinion. Okay, so we have those. Page nine and ten are on the modified basis of accounting and may follow the Massachusetts accounting rules. So you're looking at near-term inflows and outflows of spendable resources. Okay? The primary difference between those two bases of accounting is the full accrual basis. We put all of your fixed assets on your balance sheet. We put all of your debt on your balance sheet. We put the OPEB obligation, we put the net pension liability on your, your, uh, balance sheet, whereas the modified basis of accounting doesn't have those. Okay, so if you were to print out your general ledger out of your school system, page nine and page ten would represent that printout. Okay? Page seven and eight is what we do with auditors in order to be able to give you a clean opinion. Okay, so on page seven, we'll start at the very top. Uh, six point two million dollars in cash at the end of the year. Uh, we confirm all of your bank accounts. We look at all the money running in, all the money going out. We pull a lot of samples of, uh, expenses. We look at a lot of the revenues. We send out confirmations. Uh, we didn't have any issues at all whatsoever. So all the revenues were reported in the proper period for the school, recorded accurately inside your general ledger. All the expenses were approved by the school committee and complied right with your budget, so everything was fine. Um, so cash fairly stated at six point two million. And this big, big number down there below called intergovernmental receivables, and those are receivables that are owed off of federal, state grants and contracts that we have, um, to help, uh, help the school out. It's one point seven million dollars. We received all of that money as of August of two thousand twenty-four, so fully collectible. Okay? Um, going down into the non-current section there, the assets, we had about, we got nineteen point eight million dollars of fixed assets. We had about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of additions for various pieces of equipment. Uh, we traced all the invoices. We make sure that they're recorded actively in the general ledger. Didn't have any issues. Okay? Um, we got this section here called deferred outflows of resources. We also got a section called deferred inflows of resources. Um, so I'll get to that in just a minute, because those are connected with some liabilities that we put on your books. Um, going down into the liability section, about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of payables. Everything was fine. We traced it right to the warrants. We traced directly to the invoices. Things are recorded in the proper period and recorded accurately inside the general ledger. So everything was good there. Uh, the accrued payroll related liabilities, one point seven million dollars, very consistent with the previous year. Uh, we know that we always have a big liability in June because we got the payment recovering for the off months for the teachers. Um, very consistent with the previous year. We look at the calculations done by, uh, Sharon, and everything is very good. Okay, then we have, uh, down in the non-current section, we got this thing here called lease liability. So what that represents is the school here runs offices, and, uh, generally accepted accounting principles requires us to get a hold of those lease documents, calculate out what your total obligation is under those leases, discount them all back to today's dollars, and drop it on to your balance sheet. Um, in the past, going back a few years ago, uh, operating leases, you just record the expense when you cut the check for the rent. But generally accepted accounting principles came out and they said, no, we're not going to do that anymore. We don't care if it's an operating lease because what this is, or a capital lease, all leases are required to be on your balance sheet. And the reason that they did that is because there's a lot of entities out there, a lot of for-profit entities out there that were actually not disclosing the total, the true obligations that they had under their leases in the notes. So they cut the whole thing out and they said, we want everything on the balance sheet. Okay? Um, but we looked at that calculation. Everything was fine. Agrees right to the lease agreements, so it is okay. Then we have net pension liability. We know that we belong to a retirement system. Generally accepted accounting principle says that we're required to report our proportionate share of that pension system on our books. So we get the information from the retirement system. We also get the actuary calculations that are done by Pirec. We take the information out of those reports and we just duplicate them right on your financial statements here, and that's where that information comes from. Uh, who got this walker here? Oh my gosh. Hold it. Uh, other post-employment benefit liabilities, as a promised benefits to our retirees, health insurance and other life insurances, sixty-five million dollars. Um, the town, uh, sorry, not the town, the school does contract with an actuary. They perform this big massive calculation with all these myriad of things that go into it, and they come out with what that, uh, estimated and they put that, we get a copy of that report. We look at it because there's certain things that they're required to do in accordance with the GAZB standards, and we make sure that all that was followed and everything seemed to be fine with that. So we take the dollar value off that actuary calculation and we drop it on to the face of your balance sheet.
And we don't fund for that?
Uh, no, we don't have
We were talking about this before you, before the meeting began. And I realize it's a huge number.
It is, yeah.
And to try to fund fully for it would be impossible.
Well
What do other school districts do? Does anybody fund for it?
Um, not really. I'll be honest with you. We have one town that we audit that has put a tremendous amount of assets into, um, into, into a fiduciary account for it. One town. Most towns that they'll vote, they'll put some money towards it every year to recognize the fact that they do have that obligation, but there's no serious dollars, um, that go towards these unfunded obligations, minus the one town we do.
Um, and, and the state's okay with that?
Well, I mean, it's a school obligation. It's not, yeah. I mean, well, I guess it's the state that's giving you the operating money for it. Um, well, I guess to say that you don't fund for it, it's, you're not funding for the obligation for the retirees, but you but you're funding for it every year, because when you pass your budget, the health insurance expense does include the health insurance expense for the retirees. So it's funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, as opposed to
Yeah, not just the pension.
The, well, the pension is different. I mean,
Right.
You are making contributions into the pension system.
Right.
Yeah, and the pension does have benefits. Yeah, the other post-employment benefit is health insurance.
But it's a future liability. It's not present liability.
Right, exactly.
I don't, I don't, I don't fully fund my thirty-year mortgage now. I assume I'm going to make enough money over the next thirty years to make the payments for the next thirty years, you know?
Yeah.
But I mean, you, I mean, you, you pay for it every year because it's part of your budget, pay for the health insurance expense for the current employees and for the retirees, so you are funding it. It's just on a pay-as-you-go basis, which is, uh, never, I mean
So, so what's the point?
Well, GAZB, um,
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, 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 that's quite all right. GAZB, a few years ago, um, just after they required all the municipalities to put their proportionate share of the net pension liability on to bring it to the forefront, how unfunded these things are, they did the same thing with the promised health insurance spend. They did the same thing with the promised health insurance benefits to, to the retirees, just a few years after that. So the point is just to kind of bring attention to the fact that you do have an obligation to retirees.
When this first started, and I'm naive about this, and GASB required this to go on the record, people got all up in arms and said, we always have these, it just wasn't on the sheet.
Yeah.
We always had the obligation, it's just now they're making you aware of it.
Right.
And people say, well, we gotta start funding it by millions of dollars, and then it's like, we never did.
And the information was always there. The, the disclosure has always been included in the notes to the financial statements. Well, before, we had to pull it out of the notes and drop it on to the face of the balance sheet.
Personally, most people read the balance sheet and don't look at the notes, so.
Well, yeah, that's right, yeah, that's true. And that's one of the reasons why the GASB said enough is enough, we gotta put this on the, on the balance sheet, bring everybody aware.
It just is such a staggering amount.
Yeah.
And it, it's, in effect, it's meaningless, given how we operate, right?
Yeah, I mean, I see your point. It's, it's a legitimate.
Retirement health insurance is a huge part of our budget.
I understand.
We spent a month, we didn't have that obligation, we would not have the conversation.
Yeah, the obligation is legitimate, so.
Well, I understand you have an obligation. I'm just struggling with the massive size of this number, which is required, but is not meaningful in any sense of our day-to-day operations. I mean, we don't pay any attention to it. Zero, except that you look at this and you think, holy, it's the biggest number here.
Well, I mean, the idea for putting it on there is for you to think about it. But I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the OPEB. Now, there's these two items on this balance sheet here that are called deferred inflows and outflows. They're neither assets or liabilities. They're an invention of GASB a couple years ago, and they're connected with the net pension liability and the OPEB obligations. And they come into play because there's certain, there's certain portions of the OPEB and the net pension calculations where you can recognize an expense immediately. There's other portions that are connected with the long-term projections that the actuary does that you, that you don't recognize in expense immediately. And when an actuary does a calculation, the OPEB and the net pension liability numbers can change drastically from one year to the next just by the mere fact of them changing their demographic economic assumptions, changing the discount rate that they apply to the calculation. So the FASB and the GASBs, they came up with a mechanism that would allow you to temporarily park a portion of these calculations that are amortized over a closed period, so that the impact to the income statement is as smooth as possible. I hope I said that as good as possible. What I think would have been better that the GASB could have done is they should have left these deferred inflows and outflows, which are connected with these liabilities in the notes, and just brought one number forward. But they didn't, they brought new components forward, which I think adds some confusion to the balance sheet.
Yeah.
So, total, your total assets of twenty-eight million, these deferred inflows of just under five million, minus your total obligations, including your net pension and OPEB obligations, of sixty-nine million, minus deferred inflows of resources, eighteen point eight million, gets us down to our cumulative net position. We have a lot of money tied up in our fixed assets, which obviously we're not gonna sell those to meet our obligations, so those, those are kind of restricted there. We got money that we receive off of federal state grants that you have to use for very specific things. So that's where that restricted for those school activities, that four point two million. And everything else falls into the final bucket and is deficit. Primary reason that it's deficit is because we got this massive pension and OPEB liabilities on the books. Now, this is full accrual basis of accounting. GAAP requires these accounting estimates and these liabilities to be included on your balance sheet. The good thing is, is we have a balance sheet and an income statement in your financial statements that'll make much more sense, especially from a budget standpoint, when you're looking at revenues coming in and expenses going out that are backed from cash. Okay? So let's go to page nine. And I don't, my comments can go on forever, so I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I think you're doing great, and people are following, so keep going.
Okay. Page nine follows the modified basis of accounting. It very closely mirrors how you budget, okay? So here you're gonna see right on your balance sheet, all of your liquid assets. Your cash, your receivables, which we've received all by August, remember? And then we got some inter-fund receivables and payables, but those eliminate to zero, because you can see down in the liability section, inter-fund payables. That's just representative borrowing relationships, kind of waiting for grant receivables to come in, okay? Very, nothing unusual with that. But you can see total assets of eight point two million dollars. Down in the liability section, we're only looking at payables. And, and that's pretty much it. We're not junking up your balance sheet with the OPEB and the net pension liabilities. So when you go down to the net position, which we call fund balances at the fund level, you take your total assets, cash and receivables, total assets of eight point two million, back off our obligations of two and a half million, gets us down to a cumulative net position, and you can see it's positive five point six million dollars. It's not negative seventy-eight million, okay? So this here gives you a much more realistic picture of where you stand liquidity-wise and finance resource-wise for the school, especially when you get into budgeting. Okay? So it's much more a clear picture. All right? Then the bottom right-hand corner of that is the conversion or the, the crosswalk back to page seven, the full accrual basis of accounting. Okay, and those, those numbers tie right to the balance sheet. But everything was fine on the balance sheet, so no issues there. Page 10, total revenues for the school, forty-four and a half million dollars. You can see the general fund is about thirty-six million, okay? Assessments, we, we, we look at the calculations for all the amounts charged to the various towns that contribute. We recalculated those, made sure that those are done in accordance with the school agreements that you have. And everything was done fine, Sharon did an excellent job with that, so no issues there. The intergovernmental revenues of the aid that comes in to help the school. And there's this thing here called MTRS on behalf payments. It's, it's not new, we always pick it up, but in the past, it was just kind of lumped in with the intergovernmental. We separated it out, because it's really an in-kind entry. And what it is, it's the state teachers' pension system, the, the state making contributions to the pension system on behalf of the teachers for the town, for, for the school here, okay? So we recognize that. We get a copy of the audit report that's done by that pension system, independent auditors do it. And then we go down the list, there's hundreds of schools that are inside this list. We go down and we find the Berkshire Hills School District, and we find that dollar amount, and we plunk it as a revenue and as an expense, as if the state gave you the money and you cut the check to the teacher's retirement system. So it's kind of one of those constructive receipt type of accounting methods. But that's what that represents. Expenditures for the school, forty-five point one million dollars, that is a general fund, and all of our special revenue funds and school choice funds. Everything was fine. We traced to a lot of expenses, we dig through your accounts and make sure things are recorded right in your general ledger, and Sharon did an excellent job, and everything worked out just fine, nothing unusual in our tests. So, net change and fund balance is negative five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. I just wanna pull up one of the numbers way back again. You don't need to turn that just yet. But I just wanna let you know that remember, this is, says negative five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Nobody likes to see negative numbers, we know that. But remember, the school made the decision when they passed the budget to use your free cash for your earnings and deficiencies, is what you call it for the school. And you opted to use about six hundred thousand dollars of that. Well, to use earnings and deficiencies, it's not a new revenue source, because you've collected it and revenue is part of your fund balance. So it's basically using from that one point eight million dollars at six hundred thousand. So even though it shows negative, you budgeted it that way, okay? Because you used fund balance, so everything was fine. Okay. Page 11 is just a reconciliation, again, just on another page, of going from the modified basis of accounting to the full accrual basis of accounting, just looking at the net incomes, okay? But everything was fine there. Page 12, this will go much faster once I can get out of these front pages. We got trust funds, okay? The private purpose trust funds on page 12, those are really monies that are for scholarships. And the custodial funds are money that the school holds on behalf of the student groups, all right, for, for the, for, for the students there. Okay, and everything was fine, Sharon did an excellent job, didn't have any issues when we looked at that. Okay? And then just page 13 is just the income statement on that, you know, money coming in and spending money out of those trust funds. But everything was fine, okay? Now, let's go to page 14, and we're gonna be able to do a quick footnote, we'll pass it some here, okay? These describe all your notes, all your accounting policies, how you recognize revenues and expenses and what you count as a fixed asset. So they describe all the details of all the numbers that are on your balance sheet and your income statement. So we didn't adopt any new accounting pronouncements or nothing. How we recognized all the stuff in the past is the exact same way that we recognized it in the current year. No new accounting pronouncements were adopted, okay? So all this stuff is gonna be pretty much the same. So we can bypass all of these, let's go to page 19. And all the stuff that we bypassed is just how we recognize receivables and revenues and fixed assets. So, but nothing unusual. B, we dedicated a full page for the assessments to the member communities. And we know, we break it down between operating and capital, and the money comes from Great Barrington Stockbridge or West Stockbridge, okay? We spend time recalculating these amounts to make sure that no town overpaid or underpaid, and everything was fine. So then all the parties paid what they were supposed to pay in accordance with the operating regional school agreements, okay? Page 20, down at the bottom, you can see the receivables, we had a lot, and Joe broke it down into its various components. A lot of the money comes from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, federal and state grants and stuff like that. And we collected all the receivables by August of 2020, 24, August of 2024. So very good collection. No, we didn't have, didn't have to write anything off, so that's always good, okay? Page 21 is just your fixed assets. This is required by GASB, right? You know that in a modified basis of accounting, if you buy an asset or something like that, or you make an improvement, it's an expense, right? Because the cash is right out the door. GAAP says, no, you can't do that, you gotta take that expense and kick it over to the balance sheet, and that's what this represents. And then once it's on the balance sheet, we assign a depreciation method to it, which is straight line. And we assign a number of years that we think that the asset's gonna be worth to us, and then we just divide that out and we, we take depreciation expense over those number of years. So that's how the expense comes back into the income statement. Again, full accrual basis of accounting, okay? 222 is very good, very top, long-term debt, you paid off your debt, you got zero. Good job.
For the time being.
For the time being. And I know it's for the time being, because there was a subsequent event at the time we put the financial statements together. You did borrow about one point two million for the high school building projects, okay? And then we can kind of move on, move forward to page 24. And we just kind of disclose, because you have a net position at the end of the year of five point six million dollars. But you need to know, can you, can you dip into that stuff? Can you spend it, can you not spend it? So we provide this table here. And you can see that out of the five point six million dollars, we have four point two million dollars that's in these things called special revenue funds. Those are school choice funds, federal state grant funds, so money that we get, they have specific, specific spending requirements on it, until you mean those, you can't spend the money, okay? So those are kind of tied up in regards to those specific types of expenses. And then we have down in the unassigned fund balance, about six hundred and ninety-five thousand, right? And then the reserve for expenditures at six hundred seventeen thousand dollars there, just so you know, that's the vote to use the earnings and deficiencies for the upcoming budget year, 25. Okay, and the reason that that is there is because that vote was taken before June 30, 24, so it was committed. So that, that's why that's pulled out, it's not included in unassigned fund balances. Okay. So let's move on. Now, page 25, believe it or not, starts the information about the net pension liability. Oh my gosh, page 25, 26, 27. Let's go to 28, we have the important information out there. And you can see, at the top of page 28, we're not required to disclose the Berkshire County Retirement System numbers in there. We are required to disclose Berkshire Hills proportionate share of that system, which we do, and that's on the right side. But it's kind of hard to really tell. You know, and then you gotta do the math in your head, and it's not worth it. So we put the Berkshire Retirement System numbers in there, so you can see where the system stands as a, as a whole. And remember, they're calendar year, we're fiscal year, so they're six months behind us, okay? So they're reporting 12/31/23, but we're reporting June 30, 24, okay? So that's why we have to pick up the 23 numbers. But we, we represent about seven point six eight percent of that retirement system. And it's a very simple calculation, it's just the twelve and a half million multiplied by that seven point six eight percent, is that nine hundred and sixty thousand? That's the number that's on your balance sheet, okay? The driver behind that entire system is payable. And then page 29, page 30. Yeah, page 29 and page 30 talk about the Massachusetts retirement system and the fact that we're in what's called a special funding situation. And the state makes the contribution to the teacher's retirement on behalf of the school. So we have to have certain information in that, and that's what page 28, 29, and 30 represent, all that information. And then we can move forward to page 33, where we get into the OPEB. And this information here, it comes right out of the actuary, from the actuary's calculation. That's that sixty-five million dollars that's sitting on the balance sheet there. And then, required disclosure is to say, hey, the whole thing's in the accounting estimate. So it could be millions of dollars too high, millions of dollars too low. And so that's why right there in the center of the paper, you know, we could say, hey, what if the actuary put a one percent change going up or down on that calculation? And that's where you can see, hey, it could be sixty-five million, it could be seventy-five million, it could be fifty-six million. But we know it's in the millions anyways. So that's kind of what that represents. Anyways, the stuff goes on forever, it's crazy. Okay, then page 34, and then is, is the budget. We know that everything worked out fine. The school state was inside the spending confines of its budget, passed by the school committee, so everything was good there. We did end up with some excess revenues, which obviously helps the school in building up its reserve funds. So everything was, everything was fine, okay? And then, believe it or not, and this is crazy. When it starts on page 36, and 37, and 38, 39, the GASB requires to compile up to ten years of data inside your financial statements, so you can get a nice trend of where the, the net pension and the OPEB liabilities were ten years ago versus where they are today. So it's a culmination of all that data. Obviously, the two, the very left, our left column, the 23 year and the 22 year match right up to the notes and to the numbers that are sitting on your balance sheet, okay? Okay, and then, I'm gonna take out the light here, it's right here. We're gonna go to one more page here in our financial statements. Page 47. We bypassed a few pages, we bypassed some letters that come from us. So the school receives federal money. And the federal government says that if you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds, you have to undergo a compliance audit, okay? So they call it a single audit. The reason they call it a single audit is because you have a financial statement audit, and you got a federal compliance audit, comes together and they call it a single audit, that's where that term derives from, okay? But what the federal government does is it says that we gotta compile all the spending of that federal dollars. Then they have us go through a specific calculation to identify what is gonna be considered the major program out of all of that federal dollars. And then once we identify the major program, which is based upon the level of spending. And then once we identify the major program, which is based upon the level of spending, once we identify that major program, then we have to get an Office of Management and Budget circular, which tells us exactly what we have to test for, for doing audit testing, okay? So the major program for fiscal twenty-four was the COVID-nineteen money, which is identified as CFDA number, Federal Assistance Listening Number, they changed it, eighty-four point four two five. So we tested all that stuff. Everything was fine. You spent the money in accordance with the terms of the grants of which you got it under, and we didn't have any issues. So we're gonna be able to report a clean opinion back to the federal government for spending the federal dollars, okay?
This is the Department of Education?
U.S. Department of Education, that's exactly right.
So you're reporting back to them if they still exist?
This is, well, you do report back to U.S. Department of Education. This specific thing is being reported to the.
Federal audit, yes.
Federal, federal.
It still oversees various, or all the federal.
Yeah, oversees all, yeah, oversees all federal money.
And that still exists.
And that still exists, yes, I know. I, I know that's, that was a ton.
That's good.
But Sharon does an excellent job of the things you should be very proud of, your finance department. Made it very easy for us with no accounting adjustments. We have to do adjustments to the financial statements to get to from the modified basis to the full accrual basis, we gotta do that. But all that stuff is driven or drive right from the school's records. So good, clean opinion, Sharon does an excellent, excellent job. We do have a couple of management letter comments, but they're very minor, no issues. They're not findings or anything like that, just recommendations to improve upon controls that are already in place. Joe, were you able to?
Sorry, so these are in a separate letter titled the management letter. Only three pages. So as a result of going through all of our audit procedures, we also, you know, reviewed the district's controls. We worked with Sharon, the finance staff to kind of understand the processes. So as a result of going through all that, we just had a couple of recommendations that we came up with that we'd like to bring to the school community's attention. So as we were going through our testing of the district's vendor and payroll warrants, one item we noted was the timing of when payments are made to vendors versus when the school committee reviews and approves the warrant. So as a result of doing our testing, we determined that the district was actually paying vendors, sending out checks to them prior to the school committee reviewing the warrant and signing off on it. So we just made a recommendation to tweak the timing of that. Mass General Law actually allows the district to designate one member of the school committee to review the warrant and sign off on it.
Right.
So then the vendors can still be paid timely. And then the process would be for the warrant to be presented to the full school committee at the next meeting. So we discussed this recommendation with Sharon, and I guess this actually used to be the process prior to the pandemic. But then, you know, being remote and everything, a bit of hindrance in that. So in discussing that with Sharon, I believe the district decided that you would go back to that process of having one school committee member review the warrants, sign off and approve. The vendor payments will be sent out, and then the full school committee will review the warrant at the next meeting. So just a little tweak in the timing, but it won't hinder.
No, we'll do that, okay?
Yeah, so during our payroll testing, as part of our testing, we pull a sample of employee files. We review for timesheets, we review for the federal Form I-9, which documents that an employee is authorized to work in the United States legally. One minor item we noted was, as part of our sample, we had a few, yeah, Form I-9s were not available. I believe this was due to transition of the payroll files, you know, being managed by someone else in the department. So I think during that transition, a number of years ago, some of the files may have been misplaced. And we reviewed this with Sharon and the finance staff. It was agreed that they will, all of the payroll files will be reviewed and make sure that every employee has a Form I-9 that's on file, just documenting their authorization to work in, in the United States. So kind of minor point there.
Is that an audit issue?
It's more of a compliance issue.
Compliance.
Yeah, because we are required to test the district's compliance with, you know, certain legal requirements.
Yeah. We do multiple audits. So we do a financial statement audit, that's what produces this thing here. But because you get federal state funding, we're required to actually do compliance work. So there's certain things that we do to make sure that your compliance would stay in federal regulations, so.
Okay.
And then our final recommendation just surrounds some upcoming GASB pronouncements. So it seems like they're always coming out with a few more things for the district to comply with in terms of your financial reporting. So these will be effective for the district's financial statements for June thirty, twenty twenty-five, so that, uh, next year. There's a new requirement concerning the reporting of the district's compensated absences. And that's just how the district tracks and calculates unused vacation and sick time that the district may have to pay out. And then the second new GASB pronouncement, one oh two, is just surrounding certain risk disclosures. And the goal is to emphasize to the district to be aware of any certain risks that might be relevant to financial reporting. You know, if there's a certain situation going on that might have a financial impact, you know, to the district. For example, an upcoming change in enrollment or something like that. That would need to be identified to the auditors and evaluated to see if it might need to be disclosed somewhere in the notes to your financial statements. So our recommendation is just that the district review these upcoming pronouncements and, you know, become familiar with them. Where we also will help the district to make sure that your financial statements for fiscal twenty twenty-five are compliant with these new standards. In the meantime, we're just, you know, suggesting the district become familiar and be prepared for what comes ahead.
Thanks, Joe. Now, that bottom point three, obviously, we're gonna help the school through understanding those. We already made some tweaks to your financial statement disclosures for these. So once Sharon and her staff reads those, I'm not really expecting any changes to your financial statements. I think, I think you're gonna be okay. You already disclosed your compensated absences, and we already went ahead and made the disclosure for economic dependence. So, anyways, that is it in a nutshell.
Thank you. I mean, students, most people who are going to sign up, you guys were very thorough.
It's funny, usually people tell me, yeah, you start it up.
No questions, I see.
Great job, Sharon.
Yeah.
Thank you. And my staff.
All right, thanks a bunch. You're welcome to stay, but feel free to, feel free to go.
Still a little sunlight out there, guys, so don't feel bad.
Don't be shy.
So we got a few more things on the agenda. The big one, and I want to share some context on this, is with the, typically, we run policy through the Policy Subcommittee. And every once in a while, our attorneys reach out to us and say, quite bluntly, because of some over some reason, we have to change something. And this is one of those cases. So in the packet, and you might not have seen it, there was a PDF right next to the audit documents, which there were three PDFs for the audit and one separate around Title IX. A federal judge in January vacated the recent changes to the Title IX regulations. And we were so quick to implement those regulations that now we're being advised or really told to revert to the policy we had before, which was from twenty twenty-two. So what's in the packet is the old policy. And our attorneys are more than recommending, like telling us to revert to the, the previous policy. So I, I would encourage somebody to make a motion to adapt or to revert to the ACAB policy that was last approved on March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
How about a motion to strike policy ACAB in its entirety and replace it with the version that is presented in today's package?
That's more elegant than I said. Any discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, Sarah, ready? Allison?
Just come back for a second reading, huh?
Well, that's, that's the other question. I was hoping you wouldn't bring this up, but I knew you would. We asked you to do policy to circumvent policy by two-thirds, well.
Do you want me to make the effect of that motion first?
That would be the first motion. I don't remember what it was called, Peter.
I, I, I'll withdraw my motion, do you withdraw your second, Phil?
Yes.
I make a motion to waive the second reading with regard to proposed amendment to policy ACAB.
There are the second, second discussion.
I don't understand.
So policy.
Good question.
If we want to do something that's not in line with our policy, we have to vote to do that by two-thirds, which can't just have a simple majority. So we want to make sure that the majority, the two-thirds of the board understands that we are not going by our policy.
And our policy that we're talking about here is that to enact a new policy, it has to be voted on twice in two separate meetings, so you can't just rush into it. So typically, we have it, we call it first meeting, we vote on it, come back the next meeting, vote on it again. And it has to pass both to, to pass. But we're saying for this policy, because it's just a technical change, let's, we, we'll wait the second reading, just do it once.
Got it.
We've already have done this in about ten years, we don't do it often. But there are circumstances like this that just make sense to do it. So we have a motion, we have a second. So Sarah.
Yes.
Allison. Can you unmute?
Yeah, I can.
Allison, I think you're muted, you're unmuted.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Jason?
Aye.
Will vote?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah? We're all, she's still there, yeah. Again, Sarah, I think you're gonna have to unmute.
Aye. Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous, makes it easier, I don't have to figure out who's.
Make a motion to strike policy ACAB in its entirety and replace it with the proposed policy ACAB, which is currently before the committee.
Second discussion. Roll call, Sarah?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
Will?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. So we'll update that. The next thing in your packet is a revised job description to the occupational therapist. You, you can see the, the quite significant revisions to this. This job description hasn't been changed in twenty-three years. So I think it was here when it was written. Right, so it's, it's, it's time for, has you been a, agreed to this? We've not discussed it with you today yet. I thought our past practice was, we would vote on it and then we would impact bargain it, but we couldn't do that. Usually, we do the opposite. Okay, it avoids headaches. Yours mainly, so I don't care. Yeah, I made my own bed, I'll, I'll reach out to them. We have a motion. Who did the revisions? Kate did. Do, do you wanna talk to them at all or anything?
I mean, it really, twenty-three years old, it just.
Just modernized.
Modernized, but our expectations aren't now compared to what they were.
Okay. There are a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing done. Sarah?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
Will?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you for, thank you for that.
Do we have some kind of process for like a periodic review of job descriptions?
So I'll, I'll give you the short story. Three superintendents ago, we did away with the job description subcommittee. And probably since then, it's been a little, we're a little behind.
Maybe we should look at ad hoc committee and book them all and review them, I don't know.
It's, it, it's not a high priority, but it should be a little higher priority, no one's fault. No, I mean, we, we've, we, we happen to do like two or three a year, which probably isn't enough. It, it, I like to give an ad hoc committee, maybe like, I mean, we catch our breath with everything we're doing with the high school. Exactly my point, no one's fault. And, and right now, we're more reactive than proactive. And, and that's just, that's why the committee was done with. It's a lot of time for another subcommittee. So the, the next thing is through the high school update and the, the sub thing. And, and Jason may, may want to share some other things. But, but in particular, I was hoping to set a date for the high school project vote. And my recommendation, after talking with town administrators and clerks, is to recommend that we set the date for Tuesday, November fourth, for a vote. I, I think there, and I'm happy to discuss this and respond to questions around it. There's the muscle memory of voting on what would be election day, even though there's not an actual election in any case in Massachusetts on that day. It's a day when, in, in our calendar, school's not in session. So I think that, that makes, makes it also easier for, for people to vote. Those are, those are the primary arguments. I, I looked at doing it a little earlier, I think November gives us time after the summer break to, for folks to do some outreach around the project. And, and we checked with the architects and the owner's project manager, and, and they're able to make that date work with all the other deadlines and things they're, they're focused on. And Dessie is, I mean, the NSBA is all, we're done with them too at that point? No, no, we, we're, yeah, it's like the hotel town forum, we're always gonna be looking at the NSBA.
But do they provide a range or something when they need to vote, like what are the NSBA parameters?
Yeah, it fits within their parameters.
What are the parameters, do we know what the parameters are, like whatever?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but, but the, they care less about the vote. They care about what we do in relation to the vote, and it fits. That's what I'm, when I talk to the owner's project manager and the architects.
So if, if, what would the deadline be going, if we vote and it's a positive vote on that date? How does that affect?
That, that fits into backwards the timeframe as far as when the MSBA meets next to approve.
Okay.
Go forward, so that, that is in the window, like October, November, I think. Anything later in November would be pushing it, but I mean, October, November still fits in the timeframe as far as the architect and the building project manager as far as what they see.
So it just keeps the sound cycle.
Right, they meet their milestones and we go through different stages with the MSBA. One of the things that we're very lucky is having a good owner's project manager and good architects. They keep us in line and knows what we have to do things by.
A lot of, there are certain segments of the, the project that need a hard vote date to proceed. So that's why it would be good to get this done tonight, so that those different aspects of the project, you know, moving forward as well, so.
This is for the public vote? This is for the public vote. Do we, can we set the public vote? Don't the towns have to do that? No, we're a municipal entity, so we, we can. We do it, but, but the reason I reached out to the towns was to, to get their support and, and also make sure there weren't any things I didn't know about. And, and it's pretty complicated. Informally, among the clerks and, and various administrators, we had a belief about some things. And then I got additional advice from bond counsel and, and the school's own attorney around other things. So, so we all thought it, the, it, it would have been a good idea to have the same time window, like the polls open at X and they close at Y. And that's actually required that in a regional district. that in a regional district, all towns do that. So our, our intention was right. It was confirmed by the bond counsel attorney, I will frame that. But all we're setting today is the, the date. And, and what I imagine is I'll, I'll come back to you um in, in early June uh to, to ask that you set a, a, a process for how to vote and some of the additional details. And, and by that time in June, we should have a a uh, a, a number that, that can be attached to the project. There's still a fine tuning, the numbers for a lot.
So the, the short question is, all three clerks are okay with this date, and it's not gonna be a burden on towns. They're gonna be able to, to host elections on that day.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. It's fair to say it's not.
No, 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 I know. Elections, elections are very hard to run. Again, I'm not saying.
It's a financial part. There's always a financial part. That's why we're gonna have this. And any, what'll happen first is Peter or Doreen will notify the three town clerks immediately to reserve that date. And, and the process starts.
I mean, the, the, the way we ended the call was my action step, assuming you vote to set the date is tomorrow morning, I send them a memo that, that, that this is the date, and then they start doing various pieces that they need to do.
I moved to set the date for the uh proposed high school project for November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So discussion, other discussion. Hearing none. Sarah.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Jason, hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Um, anything else you want to say about the high school project?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. So for folks who are in the room, uh, but behind you are uh some uh uh concepts of a whole host of different possibilities for the building. Uh, and uh ranging from window patterns to window studies to color palettes to uh lots of color palettes to, to shapes of the building from rectilinear massing options to uh gable massing options. Uh, i- 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 and I'm not gonna totally capture all of this, but, but lots of people expressed an interest in the, in the double window with a little split between them. Um, uh, color palettes are still very much up in the air, though some of the uh, the ones were uh, uh seemingly preferred. Uh, and, and while folks appreciated all the different potential massings, I, I think there was some interest in the, in um uh versions of, of the gables. Um, and then um in, in, in the like rectilinear two and three, one is a, a little um inset, and then the base of the building's a little bigger. And then the other one, the top of the building's a little bigger, and the base of the building's a little smaller. Uh, we had some interesting conversations around what the implications for maintenance might be around having a, a six inch or or twelve inch rim around the building and, and how much time we might be spending getting leaves off that rim. Um, so thi- this was to, to inform their thinking, uh, and they're working on other things. And, and all of this is really just a teaser for um a meeting on April first at the high school and the library to come and hear a more formal update. I, I looked at a draft of that uh presentation, and it's, it's refined additionally. Uh, and I think it's a great point for, for um fans of the project to come and, and see the progress and for people brand new to the project uh to, to hear some more.
It'll be available through Zoom also.
It'll also be available through Zoom. Uh, we, we've sent a lot of stuff about the meeting. We'll send out some more reminders. Uh, and, and for folks who haven't been in the high school in decades, uh, students will run some tours before the meeting, so, so you can have a sense of the, the space as it currently is.
Excited?
Yeah.
It is getting to the exciting part, tonight's vote. We don't get excited, but it's an exciting vote because it sets off the process. The last meeting was exciting, looking at, you know, really rough. You know, this isn't exactly what the building's gonna look, look like, but we're starting to get that way. And, and we'll hear people's input, public input, school building committees already had some input. So it is, it's getting to the exciting time.
Right. Um, so my, my last thing on the agenda is, is the update around belonging and safety. I think Mirabelle the principals did a very nice job talking about some of that work. Um, um, we're doing a lot of ongoing work to try to support our new arrivals. The, the climate for uh folks is, is really tough, right? And, and that has a potential impact on attendance and mental health and any number of other things. Uh, so um a, a, a number of staff are, are reaching out individually to, to kids and families. Uh, we're sharing documents, the, the um the number of nonprofits in, in Berkshire County is considered to be overwhelming, and they're really coming together to, to support uh, uh families, which, which I think is, is quite important right now. So that, that's one big piece. Uh, the, the other one, and, and an interesting meeting with Tri-Town Health about this, um, you've, if you've followed the news, you're hearing about the uh growth of measles, uh, and that's something we really haven't dealt with uh in, in many of our lifetimes, right? Um, and, and it's coming back. Uh, we have a very high vaccination rate for the district. It's over ninety-five percent, uh, which is good. I was looking at that data today. Uh, that being said, there, there's still something like um uh fifty or so students who uh remain unvaccinated. And I'm gonna be working with the nurses and Tri-Town Health uh to, to offer opportunities if people wanna take advantage of it. I'm not compelling anybody to do it. Uh, the, the fear would be uh i- i- if there's exposure, people that are exposed could be quite vulnerable. Uh, and, and we want to do everything we can to mitigate against that.
Peter, aren't there some required vaccinations before students start in school?
There, there are, and I didn't bring my whole sheet on it, so I can't speak perfectly to it. Uh, there are, but there, um people can get a, a, a religious or ideological, ideological exemption, and I'm forgetting the exact terminology around that. Uh, uh, so that's part of it. And then uh during the uh COVID time, um, a, a, a number of people with good intentions just fell out of the, the cycle or, or routine. So, so that's another thing. Again, our, our nurses have done a really good job of checking and following up on that. Um, and, and reminding people, and, and we're gonna try again to, to get the gap to be even smaller. Uh, I'm particularly concerned about people with compromised immune systems uh and, and what the, the impact of, of um exposure could mean to them. Right, so um the, people talk a lot about herd immunity, and when you get over a certain percentage, and, and I think we're at that percentage, but I'd like to go a little farther. Um, so those were, those were my two updates around, around safety and belonging.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Policy is not met. Buildings and grounds.
Has not met.
Numbered. Superintendent's evaluation is not met. Finance subcommittee has not met. Negotiations. Personnel reports.
Um, yeah, there's just two things that I'd love to flag. Uh, uh, two teachers that um, uh, shared their intention to resign at the end of the year, Mercedes Gerona and Susan Hudson's. Uh, Mercedes is a Spanish teacher at the middle school, and Susan's a, a math teacher at the high school, and we'd like to thank them for their time and service for us.
Susan will be best.
Um, the, the other thing, you see there are a lot of uh Clio appointments. A number of these are um high school students working as interns in our after-school program. Uh, and, uh, and also some faculty, I mean, but, but, but we appreciate all of them, and I think the, the younger kids particularly appreciate the high school kids working on them. So that's great.
Any old, any rules before the committee? Any public comment? Seeing none, but unanimous. Consider the argument.